It is six thirty P M. And I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council, and since we are no longer operating under state emergency procedures, votes will be conducted on a voice call rather than roll call unless requested by a mayor, by a member, sorry. I have a few comments tonight. The city wishes to recognize the service of street maintenance worker senior John Duffy, who retired on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. John was hired June sixth nineteen eighty-eight as a mechanic helper in the central garage division. He was promoted to mechanic in December of the same year and then to mechanic two in January of ninety-five. In April two thousand seven, he took a maintenance position with the street department and worked in that position until he retired. John fit in very well with the street crew and regularly used his mechanic experience to fix everything the crew broke for the last twenty years. He is mechanically inclined and will find a way to repair almost anything. This was often helpful when something broke during a winter storm and we needed to keep the plow trucks moving. John was a person who liked to have a little fun as the lead plow on his plow route by boasting that his route was the longest of any others, even though the superintendent claimed that they were all about the same. In addition to plowing, John worked with various street crews performing patching, seal coating, and crack filling. For the past several years, he was primarily responsible for fixing and replacing street signs, marking streets with no parking signs for road and sidewalk repair, and using his mechanical skills to assist residents with propping up their mailbox if it was damaged by a snowplow. John was good at scheduling his time. Each time the superintendent would hand him a long list of things to do, he would say, you want me to do this all today? And he usually would. The city appreciates John Duffy's thirty-three years of service to the community, and we wish him a long, healthy, and happy retirement. My other comment that I have tonight is I have the distinct pleasure of wishing my wife a happy thirteenth anniversary. Every year, we get outside and we enjoy the Holzinger Trails by doing a quick mountain bike loop on our favorite trail. Our first date was there, actually, so less blood and tears this time, but definitely a fun time. And I would suggest to everyone in the community, get outside right now. It is gorgeous. We've got people coming from all over the country coming to see what we have every single day of our lives. So, thank you very much. City manager Steve Starby?
I was just wondering if there's someone on from Smith. They were gonna give a presentation.
Yep, I'm here.
All right. If it would be appropriate, your honor.
Absolutely. Alyssa, could you tell us who you are and go through a short presentation for us?
Yes, yes, I'm ready to go. Hello, everyone. I'm Alyssa Oltenbruns from Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. So, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. Also, thank you for letting me call in remotely. I'm actually going to be heading to one of our early childhood trainings right after this, so I appreciate it. So, what I'd like to do is, of course, first of all, say thank you so much. The city of Winona has been a supporter of Smith for many years, and everything I talk about tonight is only possible because of your contribution. So, thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to just sort of give you an overview of what we've been up to in the last year or two, answer any questions, and let you know about a couple current opportunities for partnership. So, with that, and I can't see you guys, so if you have questions, feel free to break in, or else I can pause after the end here and answer any questions or respond to any comments you have then.
Alyssa, this is Mayor Sherman. I'll let you know if someone wants to ask you something, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, so, Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, we're focused on keeping all of our communities in our twenty-county region strong and vibrant. We do that through three main areas of focus. We help entrepreneurs, we support early childhood efforts, and then we have some overall community vitality efforts as well. So, in a normal year, we give out about five million dollars throughout our twenty-county region. As you guys are very aware, this is not a normal year. So, we're actually lucky through partnerships and collaborations, we were able to give out an additional twelve million dollars into the region. There's some different pandemic relief efforts, so I'll highlight those as I go through those three main areas of support as well. So, our largest area of support is supporting entrepreneurs. You guys are probably familiar that we're a gap lender. So, we have actually lending pools of any size. We can help somebody start up all the way up to venture capital. One of the great things about Smith is that even if we're a small part of a lending package, we're able to provide one-on-one technical assistance. You're probably well aware of that fact, that eight out of ten businesses fail within their first two years. But when Smith is part of that package, and we really credit this to that one-on-one support we're able to provide, actually nine out of ten are succeeding on our own track record. So, we're very proud of that, and we just want to make sure everybody knows we're here to help. And even again, if we're a small part of that package, we're able to provide that support tailored to the entrepreneur. So, in emergency relief efforts, we're actually able to provide forty-eight different businesses, ten thousand dollar grants in the past year and a half to keep their business going. So, this was to keep the lights on, make payroll, inventory issues, whatever that entrepreneur needed. We were able to provide those dollars to them, and that's through partnership with deed. We also have a lot of different resources for entrepreneurs, such as every other month trainings that are free. They're virtual. Anybody can log on and participate. And typically, they're over the lunch hour, so trying to be really conducive to an entrepreneur's schedule. We also hosted our annual entrepreneurial bridge last week, actually, in Albert Lee, and we had twelve people from the Winona area attend, which was really exciting. And that conference is all about bringing entrepreneurs, like-minded people together, to learn, network, and grow. So, it's some really great outcomes from that day last week, and hopefully some people are in your community sharing that message this week. And then we also do grant making in the area of entrepreneurship. So, last year, we had an inclusive and equitable communities grant. It was a one-time grant round that was really focused on how do we initiate and support communities and entrepreneurs in making sure that all voices are heard and engage. Winona received a grant through Smith to do just that, to increase the number of diverse voices and sort of the level that they're heard at in different positions throughout the community and the national throughout Winona County. So, really excited to see how that grant continues to move forward. Our next area of support is early childhood education, and really want to make sure every child is ready to learn when they enter kindergarten. It's very important for continued success. Also, as far as one of the best investments you can make in the longevity and fruitfulness of a community is actually in early childhood education. Also, we're in the middle of a nationwide childcare shortage. So, what we're doing to try to help with all of this is we're really supporting providers specifically. That's where a lot of the issue is, is a lot of people are retiring out of the field, and we don't have as many people coming in. So, we're trying to remove barriers so people can get into this field easier, understand the difference licensing, the curriculums, all of the things that you need to be a successful childcare provider. So, trainings, we offered thirty-five virtual, of course, in the last year, and actually tonight is our first in-person training in over a year for childcare providers, but those are free of cost. To be a childcare provider, you have to be licensed, and you have to have continuing education credits. So, all of these different trainings are really helping with that. Twenty-nine different providers from the Winona area attended our trainings in the last year, so we're very grateful for that. Also, we have a consultant. Please feel free to spread the word far and wide. His name is Jeff Andrews, and he's willing to help any provider that may be having some difficulties with their business plan, with licensing. We're a community as a whole that's trying to address this childcare shortage. So, we've had some great representation from the Winona community previously on our board with June Reinicki. And so, we're really excited to continue to be very in touch with the childcare climate in Winona. We also provide a lot of grants in the area of early childhood education. One of them is actually providing books. The Winona Public Schools actually just received a grant, five hundred books were picked up a few months ago that are going to be going towards school, children in your local community. And really, the goal is to get hands in the, get books in the hands of children to build their own library, promote child-parent bonding. And again, the overall goal is still to make sure that children are ready to learn when entering kindergarten. We also provided an expansion grant to discover tree childcare center in the last year, year and a half. And that was really about, again, adding slots, adding space for children to be able to go and receive quality care. So, we're kind of attacking this on a lot of different fronts. As far as the pandemic is concerned, we were able to provide twenty-nine providers emergency grants just to, again, figure out what was going on when the pandemic hit and have them use it in their best interest for what they needed to continue to provide for those young kiddos. And our last area of focus is community vitality. A big, big part of this area is actually keeping philanthropic dollars local. We are a fiscal host of a number of donor-advised funds, community foundations, things of that nature. You guys have a strong local community foundation, so typically aren't accessing those services. However, we also have a picture painted program, which your local four-H group received paint to upgrade their county fairgrounds building this past year, which is really fun. And we have some other sort of random events that tend to happen in this area that will make sure that everyone is aware of as well. So, all in all, we've actually contributed about one point three million into Winona County in the last two years or so. So, we try to be very good stewards of your dollars as donors. And if we, does anybody have any questions or else I have a couple of things I want to make sure you're aware of that are opportunities right now that you could take in again and jump?
I don't see anybody have any questions.
Okay, so just two final things I want to mention is our economic development grant round is currently open. So, that is something that actually the garage coworking space in Winona took advantage of a few years ago. Keep that in mind. The deadline is towards the end of October, I believe, the twenty-sixth. Those are twenty thousand dollar grants, and really focused on how can you provide resources to entrepreneurs in your community or in your general area. Another grant that has been taken advantage of locally is our early childhood wraparound grant. This is really for those services that are beyond school, and especially in light of the pandemic, mental health was a very large issue and continues to be an issue for our young children in dealing with all of these changes that everyone's going through. So, this is specifically geared on how can we help stimulate some of those additional programs? So, for example, in the last round, Big Brothers, Big Sisters in your local community actually accessed a grant to increase their services. So, keep that in mind as well. That's going to be open, I believe, until the end of October also, but I can send you guys that specific information. So, with that, do you guys have any, any comments, anything? I'm sorry, I can't see anything, so I can't gauge on.
Hi, thank you. I'm Steve, and you know, I just want to thank you. You really bring enthusiasm. And a couple of things that I just key in on, on, on what you're saying that I really appreciate, that you're, you're focused on entrepreneurs. I run a small business myself, and it's one of the important building blocks of a, of a community our size, and then investing in children. So, thank you for that. Keep doing that. It's so important that we continue investing in those. And of course, there's many other things to invest in, of course, but small business and children near and dear to my heart. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Anyone else? George, go ahead.
Yes, Councilman Borzakowski here. Thank you again for a very good thorough report. It's always a good positive report, and as always, say hello to Tim Penny from us.
I most certainly will, of course. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we just hope you guys will continue your support in twenty twenty-two. But let me know if you need anything else from Smith, and I'll pass your kind words along to everybody in the office.
We will do that. Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Good evening. City manager Steve Starby, do you have any comments tonight? Okay. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Young?
Here.
Muller? Alexander?
Here.
Ayden?
Here.
Borzakowski?
Here.
Rapinski?
Here.
Preach public hearing staff will make a short presentation, and then I will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address, and you'll be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion in the city council. I do not have a public hearing tonight. I'm reading an old script. Now, everybody is aware of a public hearing, yes. Reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak.
Under petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one is reappointments to the citizens' environmental quality committee.
I'd move approval of those appointments.
Motion by Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
Please do.
I'm really pleased to see Lynette Power and Dave Ruff coming on board to the environmental committee. They're both excellent people. Very good.
Thank you, Pam. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point two is reappointment to the merit board.
Make a motion to approve that appointment.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is massage therapy licenses.
I make a motion to approve the licenses.
Second.
Second.
A motion from Michelle. We'll take a second from Aaron this time. Any discussion? Go ahead, George.
I can see that these massage, massage therapy licenses are really starting to take off. So, there appears to be a lot of them coming our way. So, good luck to all those that are in that business. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point four is Katie Place's street closure request.
Move approval of that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Go ahead, George.
I know they're talking closure, I believe, from Eighth Street to Ninth, Buchanan Street in Ninth location. They normally just go from the alley to Ninth Street, but this is going to include all that. So, but I'm going to guess they will not need all that area, so.
Okay, thank you, George. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point five is the Winona Main Street Program's street closure request.
I make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? I'd just like to say I'm excited to see this extended and moving forward into the fall here, so.
Is Ben here?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, yeah. Good, good work on Main Street, Ben. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, George. I appreciate it.
Um, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Ben, may I say that you're looking quite lovely this evening?
I can't see what I look like right now, but.
You look like the chamber president. It's a good picture.
Oh, I see.
It is. Thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point six is an ordinance correction for Franklin Street vacation.
I make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point seven is an ordinance correction for stop signs on Kansas Street at intersection with King Street.
Make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion or questions? We have Ryan here. Go ahead.
I can verify as of about thirty minutes ago, the sign was properly placed where we intended to place it.
Excellent.
And it is needed. I drive that frequently, so.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point eight is an updated ordinance for parking spaces reserved for city staff near the library.
Make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point nine is a license agreement for Storm the Day event.
I'd make a motion to approve the license agreement, authorize the city manager and clerk to execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Go ahead, George.
It's good to see front porch is involved in this as well, too, Chad, so it'll be, it'll be a good event.
Yeah, this is a cool-looking event. With Bill or Mandy, care to stand up and say a few words real quick? Scooch on over. I'd like to say before you start, great job on this project. I think it's really cool, and it's neat how you're working it into the Prairie Island campground, so thank you.
Yeah, we're really excited about this. It's an event really that anybody can participate in. You get to decide how many, how many loops you do around. It's an eleven-hour event, so it starts at sunrise and it finishes at sunset. And so, all the donations collected and then parts of the profit will go to youth mental health services as well in, in this area.
Very good. Thank you so much again.
Mandy, I have a quick question. This is Councilman Rapinski. Are those trails that were already there in the Prairie Island, did you have to cut those through?
No, they're, it's just grass, so it's kind of along the, the disc golf course.
Okay, so it doesn't go, I'm just trying to picture where that is. It doesn't go like the old, old dirt bike, mini bike trails back there. It's not using those, okay?
No.
Okay.
We're all in, within the campground in the Kulanis Park area, using mainly the disc golf course.
Okay, so does it go on the opposite side of the dog park then to it all? It's nothing, okay?
No.
Okay.
Any other question?
Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point ten is a street closure request for Dine Out Downtown.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion?
Can we see Ben's picture again?
We'll skip that one.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for fulfilling George's request. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the Minnesota Historical and Culture Heritage Grant Application for the Lake Park Bandshell National Register of Historic Places nomination.
I make a motion direct staff to apply for that grant.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have one thing.
Go ahead.
If we apply for that grant, is that automatically granted as a HBC then? Is it, is it considered historic location where we can never fix or change that bandshell at all? Or does that have the ability to still be updated, evolved?
Luke Sims is here from Citizen City Plan.
Mayor and council, the grant application is just to secure funds from the Minnesota Historical Society at this time. The determination for whether or not that property will be deemed historic will be up to the Minnesota State Review Board and the Department of the Interior. We do anticipate that it will be put on the National Register of Historic Places because the property has been determined as eligible for the National Register. Once it is on the National Register of Historic Places, it is still able to be altered and modified, and there is probably a number of different improvements that need to be made in order to make sure that that building maintains its integrity. If there are any substantial changes, they will be reviewed by the Minnesota Historical Society, or, excuse me, the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office, just like any of the other historic properties owned by the city of Winona. And that's typically a fairly straightforward process.
That answers my question. I just wanted to know if, you, you answered it perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you.
He always does. Thanks, Luke. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point two is We Are Water Exhibit Post Agreement.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the attached agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Absolutely. John Howard, Sustainability Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, this is a, a project that would bring a exhibit, traveling exhibit, to the history center, and it has a bunch of information about water, recreational water, and actual uses. And the cool part is we get to add some local flair to it. So, there'll be some pieces on probably the Driftless and Karst added to this exhibit, and it would be here for about, about two months.
Any other questions for John?
Is Lake Winona going to be part of the, part of the exhibit?
It certainly could be featured. So, there's also, as part of hosting the site, there are four, at least four events that are going to happen in conjunction with it. And Lake Winona could be an interesting one to have something there, a lake, a lake pickup or some, you know, fishing tournament or something of that nature.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Council Concerns.
We'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, congratulations to street maintenance worker John Duffy for your years of service to the city of Winona in, in different departments that you have worked. And one thing about John, you would see him out and about, and I know Aaron has seen him. We'd say, hey, there's a pothole on this street or this alley. John would put her in the head and we'd get ready to go with it. So, I say, John, of course, living in the fourth ward, he tended to take pretty good care of it, so.
Very good care. Just to piggyback, Mayor, on his comments, John has always been the guy that, in the East End, we jokingly said, if John can't fix it, it ain't broke.
Right. And then also, I'd just like to pass on a thank you to Jeannie Black and her group of Operation Lifesaver and Miller Ingenuity. I believe it was last week, Thursday, I know I gathered with them on Mankato Avenue and Miller Ingenuity marked on the sidewalk and just a good effort so that we all take train safety serious because you come, you get involved with a train, you normally do not come out a winner. And like I said, we had a good discussion there as we were, so thank, I know they did Mankato, Huff, Maine, Hamilton.
I was at Maine, yep.
You were at Maine, and did they do Franklin?
I think so.
So, anyway, it was, you know, a very nice event, spreading the word for safety. And then just on a sad note, I would just like to offer condolences to the family of Mike Wynn Junior, who passed away last week, and his family is in our thoughts as they begin with their healing process on his passing. Young man. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander?
This weekend, there's a lot going on, but don't forget Yanni Kohane down at Levy Park on Saturday. It should be quite a fun-filled day with music, dancing, great food from around the, the, the region. Looking for volunteers still that might want to serve a beer or two. I know that there are other opportunities, so don't forget the cemetery walk. Go to that first, then head on down to the levy. Hope to see y'all there.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember Ayden? Thank you. Councilmember Young?
The weather's way too nice for me to have a council concern.
Okay.
We're gonna leave it there.
Very good. Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Rapinski?
I think, Your Honor, I want to just extend my congratulations to the owners of Sliced, the newest restaurant that is having a soft opening, and they'll be up and running in full speed very shortly. So, congratulations to Slice. It's in the old Betty Jo's location. So, they did a nice job on the building. I happened to make it there today, and it's phenomenal. It really, it's really nice. I think it's going to be a real good addition for downtown Winona.
Thank you.
Under consent agenda, there are five items. Approval of the September twentieth minutes. And item eight point two is ordinance to rezone parcels on Sugarloaf Road. Item eight point three is an ordinance to designate handicap parking spaces in parking lots seven and nine. Eight point four is an ordinance to designate handicap parking spaces on Third and Fourth Streets. And item eight point five is an ordinance to set the fees for the city services for twenty twenty-two.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Aaron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Then the time being six fifty-nine and there being no further business.
Then the time being 6:59 and there being no further business to come before this council, this evening, I move we adjourn.
I will second that.
Motion from Michelle, second from George. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.